The time now is 7:30 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Old Bridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment for October 15, 2020. I'm James Sullivan and as Chairman of the Board, I would ask you now to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country.
Pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the open public meeting fact, at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting by permanently posting a municipal complex and announcement giving the time, date, location, and the agenda of this meeting, also by mailing such announcements to the Home News and Tribune, finally by filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and I believe it's also posted on the Old Bridge Township website. Mr. Silverman, could we have a roll call, please? You're muted, Kim.
Mr. Dewhurst?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Ms. Kilduff?
Here.
Mr. Skagno?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Psychowski?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Yeah.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Gill?
Here.
Ms. Sawat?
Yeah.
And myself, Kim Silverman.
Thank you, Kim. For those watching, this meeting is being conducted electronically via the Internet by a webinar seminar. It is unique and obviously takes patience on all involved. We no longer gather together in a courtroom, but we're doing so from our own homes or our own offices, as well as the professionals are doing the same thing. This meeting is simultaneously being televised by OBTV Channel 15 and as well as it's streaming on YouTube. I remind all of you who are watching us that there is sometimes up to a thirty-second delay in communication. This becomes important to remember if you wish to personally take part in the public portion. Anyone calling in must usually lower their device, otherwise you'll be confused by the time delay. I'd ask all participants now in this meeting to silence their cell phones at this juncture to avoid any disturbances. The meeting will follow the same protocols as always by, as enacted by the Zoning Board of Adjustment. There are some general housekeeping matters to start with, which will be followed tonight by two applications. Depending on the length of the first one, there may or may not be a recess in between if you're watching at home in order for the professionals and the board members to take a short break. That may not be necessary tonight. It seems that this may go rather quick this evening. But we'll see as that comes along. And if you're watching at home, an announcement will be made that we're going to be recessed. There'll be a sign up and I'll announce a time that you will return. As in all applications, after the applicant or the applicant's professionals prosecute their case, in other words, they testify before the Board, we wait till all of them are done, and then we're going to open the public portion. So that portion again follows all the testimony. If you have particular interest in any of the matters that are coming before the Board this evening, and you wish to ask questions via telephone, I suggest you take notes during the presentation this evening, so it'll refresh your memory when it's time to call in. Now would be a perfect time to grab a pen and some paper to take your notes should you have interest in this matter, in any of the matters this evening. Right now, the, this webinar is being, the administrator is Vena Sawat, who's the Township Planner. And as always, I forget to say some things, and I ask her to bail me out by reminding me what I missed. Ms. Sawat, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you, Chairman. Good evening, all. Couple of reminders. Zoning Board members will be muted during the first half of the meeting when they will be required to vote on other agenda items. The zoning board attorney, the zoning board chairman, the zoning board secretary, and the court reporter will remain unmuted throughout the meeting. Everyone else will be muted once the presentation for the application begin. The applicant's professionals will be asked to turn on their video and unmute themselves in the order in which they will testify. During the public commentary period, I will announce the last four digits of the caller's phone number to come forward, announce their name and address. I will also announce the last four digits of the next caller's phone number so that they will be prepared. We will share our screen to display any exhibits. Please be mindful that there is a thirty-second time lag in the presentations. The meeting information will be displayed on the screen multiple times during the meeting so that any resident who wishes to call and join the meeting can do so. Please be patient. You will have an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sawat. Board members from the original, if you saw the last agenda today, it has changed slightly. We'll see that under continuances, but we're going to move on to resolutions next under item two. And we have one this evening at six dash twenty twenty Z Fountains at Old Bridge LLC. Mr. Sax?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is application six dash twenty twenty Z Fountains at Old Bridge LLC. It was an application for preliminary major site plan with C variances and design waivers. Property located Block 10253, Lot 9.11, on Spring Hill Road, Old Mill Road, and New Jersey State Highway 34. Application was heard on September 3rd of 2020. The Board will recall, a use variance was granted back in November of 2018 to permit apartments as well. A floor ratio was granted at that time and a density variance. And this would have permitted the construction of two, two-story age-restricted apartment buildings containing twenty-nine units each for a total of fifty-eight units, together with ancillary site improvements, including a clubhouse, pool, gazebo, driveways, parking areas, landscaping, and lighting. And that's what the instant application was for, which was for preliminary major site plan with C variances and design waivers. There were three bulk variances for parking setback, for separation between buildings, and for a paved, and for encroachment into a buffer for the emergency access road. There were three design waivers for parking stall size, height of fixtures, and for foot candle levels. The applicant presented testimony from Mr. Sean Delaney, who was the applicant's professional engineer and also professional planner. The applicant agreed to comply with all the recommendations contained in the memorandum from the Board's Consulting Engineer Environmental Resolutions, Inc., as well as any other township agencies. There was no public opposition to the application. The application was approved on September 3rd of 2024, preliminary major site plan, C variances and design waivers, and you'll have the resolution in front of you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sax. Board members, you've heard the resolution. I would ask someone to move it for adoption.
Motion to approve. Connor?
I second it. Skagno?
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Chairman, Kim is having some issues, technical.
She's muted. Right, there we go. Kim, you're showing that you're muted.
You know what, Mr. Chairman, if you want, I'll call the roll.
I was just gonna say, could you pull, Mr.?
Yeah, yeah, let me just pull out the resolution. Let me get to see who was here to vote.
I was gonna do that.
Okay. All right, so it's been moved by Mr. Connor?
Yes, and seconded by?
Seconded by Mr. Skagno?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Mr. Dewhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Skagno?
Yes.
Mr. Psychowski?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, I got it down. Okay.
We move along to the next item, continuances, and there is one this evening. It's forty-five dash twenty twenty Z DCH Investments, Inc. They're located on 955 Route 9 North. You would probably know it better as the Honda dealer. That's for a sign, a height and square footage variance. Hyatt and Pay Firm is representing. Peter Clausers of the record, and they have asked for a continuance. That would be to move to November 5th with further notice. That's also going to be an electronic meeting. So if you were watching at home, that matter in short is not going to be heard this evening. If you have anything that you want to add or question, the next time it's going to be on the agenda would be November 5th. You probably should write that down if you have particular interest. It will not be heard this evening. That's going to bring us aboard to our two applications for the evening. I'm sorry, you know what?
Minutes.
Minutes on, under item four. That would be from October 1st meeting, 2020. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to read them, absent commentary or additions, deletions, or omissions. I'd ask someone to move them for adoption as well.
Motion, Kilduff.
Kilduff, okay.
We have a second?
Second, Dewhurst.
Okay, very good. Roll call, please. Kim, are you back?
I hope to stay. Mr. Dewhurst?
Give it a try.
Mr. Dewhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. See, as I mentioned in my introduction for you watching at home, I said this isn't always easy. Something, something sometimes does go wrong. Bear with us. We apologize in advance. Now we'll go to item five, and that will be applications. There are two this evening. We're going to take them in order, and I'm going to read them in for the record presently. Seventy-five dash twenty twenty Z, it's Casey and Katie Lenning. It's Block 19011 Lot 5, located at Seven Jerry Lane. This is going to require a C variance for pole barn and an open porch with roof. I see Mr. Lenning is present. You're going to unmute yourself, sir? There we go. Mr. Lenning, I think you're familiar with our procedure, probably very similar to what Planted Wood does. I will, just for the sake of those at home, give the instructions as I normally would. We would ask you to please present to the Board what you want to do, why you're going to do it, how it's going to be accomplished. Of course, we're going to have to ask Mr. Gill then why there's a problem, and then we may have some questions of you. You may have some questions of us. When we're done, then I'm going to ask you if you want to proceed for a vote, in which case I'll ask, I will go to the public portion first, and then we will take a vote, should you want one. So that's pretty straightforward. I'm sure you understand that, correct, sir?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Sax, we'll swear you in, and then you can proceed.
Mr. Lenning, please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
All right, please state your name, spelling your last name, and address for the record.
First name's Casey, last name Lenning, L-E-N-N-I-N-G, and I live at Seven Jerry Lane, Old Bridge, New Jersey.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else going to be testifying tonight, Mr. Lenning?
No, sir.
Okay, why don't you proceed then?
Sure. So I'm going to start with the front porch and wraparound deck. So my wife and I recently purchased a home, and it's our forever home, so we want to make the, all the improvements that we're looking for. And once we decided what we're looking to do, I spoke to Damien, and he instructed me that the plans were going to require some variances. So the, if you look at the survey that's in front of you, you can see that we're planning to expand the front porch and wrap it slightly around the side of the house. And that's going to have a roof, but there's not going to be any walls closing it in. And then after the roof ends, we're going to continue it down and tie it to the existing deck. We're going to need, if the Board approves it, two feet of relief on the side. And I submitted a picture to the zoning board that shows the front of the house, and there's ample room between the houses, so I don't think it's going to affect anybody in a negative way.
And you want to tell us about pole barn?
Yes, sir. So in the back, you know, we're looking to put up a pole barn. I have two plastic cars, fifty-eight Ford and a sixty-two Chevy, and we're looking to store those inside there. And then additionally, I have three little girls, twin seven-year-olds and a sixteen-month-old. So we have bikes and scooters and electric cars, and you name it, I have that toy. So we're looking to store all of that in there. We're not looking to go extremely tall. The plans state that the max height's thirteen feet, ten inches, three-quarter high, and the footprint is thirty-six feet wide by twenty-six feet deep. And we're looking to install electric in the future, but at this time, it's going to be strictly storage, so, you know, we're not going to install the electric.
Just as I mentioned, when I read, when I read your application and you said you weren't looking for that, I think it would be a smart move if you asked for it now, even if you're not going to do it.
Oh, absolutely.
You don't want to have to come back and do it again.
Correct, yeah. We would like to get the approval for it, but you know, it's not.
Obviously, other Board members may disagree with me, but that's my opinion, and I think you should.
I appreciate that. Yeah, so we would definitely like the approval for the electric at this time, so again, I don't have to come back. But, you know, at this time, there's no plan on putting the electric into it. The building is not going to be used for any commercial use whatsoever. There's not going to be any driveway to the building, you know. I only take the cars out on nice days, so I don't need, you know, there's not going to be high volume going back and forth to it, like a Saturday cruise, basically. And with the kids' toys, the bikes, all that, there's no need for a driveway for that. And we're looking to put the pole barn only five feet off the rear property line. I know that's, you know, tennis standard, but if you, I submitted another picture which shows the backyard. The house behind me has an extremely deep lot, and they store a couple boats back there, so I don't think it would negatively impact them either. Currently is the picture of the front of the house, so you can see the distance between the two houses. My house is the one to the left, and the porch would obviously be on the right side of the house.
Any other exhibits that you want us to see before I ask Mr. Gill?
Nothing really. The neighbor behind me, two houses away, they also have a pole barn, so it's not out of the ordinary for them to be in this area. There is a picture of it, but I don't know if the Board needs to see it. No. What's the whole depth of your lot? Two-hundred-and-forty feet.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if we can just mark some exhibits, I guess we're, yeah, let's mark A1, which was, I think, a photograph that I got today by email, which I think showed the backyard. A2 can be the front of Mr. Lenning's house, and I guess this last one that he submitted will be A3, last photograph.
Larry, if I may, there were almost six photographs that were submitted to me. If you can, I will just display them one by one, and we can number them.
Okay, that's fine.
Storing the pictures, if you want, I can give you a brief description of what I was showing you guys. Go right ahead, Mr. Len. Thank you. So again, this is the front of the house. We'd be putting the porch on the right side, you know, wrapping around, and it just shows the distance between the two houses.
All right, so let's label this one A1. All right, Vena, let's, if you could show the next one.
This is the rear left side of the house, so this is where the deck would tie in, the new deck would tie into the existing deck.
All right, let's call that A, let's mark that A2. Okay, A3, I think you already testified to, Mr. Lenning, is just a, I guess, an elevation of the proposed pole barn, right?
Yeah, that's just a rendering of the building.
Yeah, okay, very good.
So we have three more?
All right, A4, what is A4 again, Mr. Lenning?
That's the pole barn in my neighbor's yard.
Okay.
Approved building, and just to show that it's consistent with the neighbor.
Okay, thank you. Is that of similar size?
I, his is definitely taller. I don't know the square footage. Okay, just to give us a perspective. This is just a picture of the, you know, my rear property, and you can see the neighbor behind stores a couple boats back there.
All right, so that's A5.
This picture, we didn't really touch on. If you look at the survey, it actually pulls out a swale in the back of my property. I'm responsible to maintain. I just wanted to show you guys, it's not like a super-deep, you know, drainage ditch. It's literally a few inches, but I just wanted you guys to be aware of that.
Okay, we'll mark that A6.
And that would cover all the photographs, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. You wouldn't be putting any plumbing into this proposed pole barn?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Plumbing? You wouldn't be putting any?
No, absolutely not. No plumbing, no heat, you know, strictly storage.
And you would, you would agree, if approved, not to run any commercial business or commercial offices out there?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm going to go to Mr. Gill, if it's okay with Mr. Lenning. We'll come back to you. Mr. Gill?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, members of the Board and the public. As Mr. Lenning was discussing his application, it really comes down to two elements. The front yard, or the, in the front yard, the addition of what amounts to a wraparound porch or a wraparound deck, since most of it isn't covered. When Mr. Lenning met with me, we discussed some options about what he could and couldn't do, what trying or attempting to comply with the ordinance, what kind of effect that would have. So if this was an uncovered structure, we wouldn't be here for a variance for this element. It would be a deck, and decks would have been conforming based on the eighteen-foot setback that he's proposing. It's because of the element of the porch cover or the roof that we treat it as part of the structure, and therefore the principal structure setbacks apply. So he's applying for eighteen foot where twenty is required. One of the reasons, I think, Mr. Lenning, correct me if I'm wrong, that he opted to go for the eighteen foot is because chopping the width of the porch down to the six feet that, or I'm sorry, is it an eight-foot addition on the side there, an eight-foot width? Yeah, chopping it down to the six foot would have created a wedge. If you recall on picture A2, Vena can pull that back up really quick, so I can just give some context. There's a chimney chase on that side of the building.
Right.
About eighteen to twenty-four inches. So to narrow it down to the six foot would have, it would have been functional, but it would have created a really tight space. So if we look there at that chimney chase, it's about two and a half feet, three feet wide. So it would have been a really narrow portion, and I think since the applicant was proposing a variance for the pole barn, it only made sense to include this as part of the application. Now, with regard to the pole barn, as Mr. Lenning stated, the structure is in excess of the allowable size. Our residential, our ordinance allows six hundred square foot for residential structures, which is amounts, amounts to a three-car garage. Pole barns tend to be larger, and everybody wants to go for the biggest that they can get. And I think he explained that there were some, there's some items that he owns that he wants to be able to store, and I think there's some growth that he's planning for the future for the family, and he wants to be able to put some of those, I think he called them toys, in there. And with the setback, he really was opting for it because the properties that front South Street are acre-plus lots that are three, four hundred feet deep, and most of them are using them for passive storage for things like large accessory structures and boats and things like that.
And that would be the street behind him?
That, it's actually the street that Jerry is accessed off of, so it's the street beside him, but those properties are so long that they back up to, the one property backs up to all the houses on Jerry Lane on that side. Or almost all of them, I should say.
Anything else, Mr. Gill?
That's all.
What's the, what's his setback problem on the back? He's going five feet, he needs what?
That's right. He's going five feet, and he's required to have ten foot.
Just out of curiosity, why didn't we move it to the ten? Is there, is the ground?
I think, I think, I'll let Mr. Lenning, you know, expand on it. I think one of, one of the reasons was, yeah, I think one of the reasons that he was doing it, that he conveyed to me, was he wanted to keep it as far away from the easement as possible and didn't want to make improvements. If he decided to do something with the driveway in the future, he didn't want it immediately into the easement where we had to figure that, that whole mess out. Mr. Lenning, if you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, that's exactly right. I wanted to try to stay away from the easement and preserve as much yard as possible.
And what, there was a picture. What is behind you? It looks like there's some woods and then structures.
Yeah, there's a chain-link fence that separates the property lines, and there's a little bit of a, like a hedgerow. There's some trees there, nothing too serious, nothing large caliber. And then behind that, on the neighbor's property, their property's so deep that they actually store two boats back there.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Gill, you said nothing else, correct?
Correct, Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Sawat, did you want to say anything? I know you.
I actually don't have any comments.
Okay, very good. Board members, I'm going to go from left to right to see if there's any questions. Leon, any questions?
Yes, yes, I do, sir.
Go right ahead.
Mr. Lenning, the bay window in the front, is that going to be an obstacle?
No, the front porch is, we're proposing ten feet wide, so the bay window sticking out would still give us that eight-foot clearance.
How much does that come out of your house, the bay window?
I didn't measure it exactly, but it appears to be about two feet.
Two feet out. And the runoff from the bay window?
Currently, there's a roof, so on the new porch, we, we're going to construct a roof on that. Encompass that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Kilduff?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Connor?
No questions.
Mr. Dewhurst?
No questions.
Mr. Walker?
No questions.
Okay, and Mr. Stoner?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Psychowski?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Sax, you have anything that we missed?
No, I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can't be lived in, can't be a commercial business.
No plumbing, right.
Plumbing, but.
But all the conditions.
We can.
Electric is permitted, right.
Even though he's not putting any in, he should get the permission. Anything else you want to say, Mr. Lenning? Otherwise, I'm going to go to the public portion.
No, sir.
Okay. If you're, this is when I spoke earlier about the public portion, when people could call in, this would be the time. We're going to put up a board there with some phone numbers on it. Ms. Sawat will do that. If you have any issues that you would like to bring up concerning this particular application, we invite you to call in at this time. And we're going to give it about a minute, just in case somebody didn't write any numbers down before. Is there anyone waiting at present, Ms. Sawat?
No, there is none.
Okay. Why don't we just give it sixty seconds, Ms. Lenning, and give the people a chance? Absent that, then we'll move, go back to you. It's too bad it wasn't a fifty-eight Edsel, Mr. Lenning, instead of a.
No one yet.
No one, Ms. Sawat? I didn't hear her.
No, no one there, Jim.
Okay. All right, I'm going to close the public portion on this particular application, and I'll go back to you, Mr. Lenning. Anything you want to say in, to wrap up? Otherwise, I'll ask you if you'd like us to take a vote.
I have nothing else to say. Just thank you for hearing the application tonight, and hopefully you look favorable on it.
Okay, great, sir. This is for, Damien, this is two C variances, right?
Correct. A side yard variant, three.
A side setback and a rear setback.
And also the size of the structure.
Is that a waiver? Is that a, is that a bulk variance?
I believe that's a bulk variance.
Okay.
Yeah, the size is a bulk variance.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Larry, could they all go together, right?
Yes.
Okay. So Boards for three Cs, someone want to move that?
Motion, Walker.
Is there a second?
Second, Kilduff.
Roll call, please, Ms. Silverman.
Mr. Dewhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Skagno?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Ch, Cherskowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Uh, we do have a resolution, Mr. Sacks, in the event that.
Yes, we, we do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is, uh, application that's, uh, 75-2020Z. Uh, the applicant is, uh, Casey, uh, Lanning, and Casey and Katie Lanning. Uh, property located at seven Jerry Lane, block 19011, lot 5. It's an application to permit the construction of a garage slash pole barn in violation of, uh, size, proposing 936 square feet where 600 feet is required. Um, also violating the rear yard setback, uh, which I believe is, uh, five feet. And Damian, what is, what's the setback requirement for the rear yard? I don't see it on.
Ten feet.
Ten, okay, ten feet. Uh, and also a side yard setback for the wraparound open porch with roof where 20 feet is required, proposing 18 feet. Uh, the conditions of approval, construction to be completed within one year of the issuance of the building permit. Uh, the garage slash pole barn will conform with the existing house, that meaning the exterior, or as close as possible. Uh, third, at the garage slash pole barn, to have electric only, no plumbing. Uh, fourth, that it be for personal use only, not for any commercial or business uses. Uh, the fifth condition is that no additional driveway to be constructed to the garage, uh, slash pole barn. Uh, and I believe the testimony from Mr. Lanning is that he only takes his vehicles out on nice days where he doesn't need a driveway. Uh, also that he'll continue to maintain the drainage swale, uh, which is an encumbrance on the property. Uh, and finally, that the porch to remain open.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Board members, you, you heard the resolution. Someone want to adopt, uh, move for adoption?
I'll move it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Connor.
Roll call please.
Mr. Dewhurst? Mr. Dewhurst?
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Skagno?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Psychowski?
Yes.
Chairman Solven?
You know, you said an interesting thing, uh, Mr. Lanning. When you came in, you said, this is my forever house in Old Bridge, and it, it, it's, it's, uh, great for the community when people improve their own houses and they don't move out of the community and, and take their families with them. So I, uh, praise you for doing home improvements, making it your forever house, and my vote is certainly yes. That's the letter.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, good night, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Debbie, you're already set up?
I'm ready.
Okay, and is Mr. Pape available? I don't see any purpose in a, uh, in taking a recess.
We are ready if, uh, if you would not like to take a break.
Yeah, we're not gonna take a break, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this in as long as everyone else is in agreement with me. Uh, it's 68-2020Z, 3382 Hampton Place LLC. Uh, it's block, uh, 19009, lots, uh, 131.11 and 131.12. The physical location is at 25 South Street. Uh, it's for a single-family house, uh, addition, uh, requiring a C variance. Kenneth Pape from Highburn Pape Farms representing the applicant. Mr. Pape?
It'll actually be Jared Pape taking over this evening.
I saw Mr. Pape's, uh, face there before. What happened? Not that I, not that I don't want you here, but.
Supervising, I suppose.
He's supervisor.
There, there you go. Go ahead, Mr. Pape.
Good evening, members of the board and board professionals. My name is Jared Pape with the law firm of Highburn Pape. Our firm represents the applicant, Mr. Trytgo. Uh, before beginning, I would just like to ask Mr. Sacks if he could confirm our legal notices were, uh, found to be adequate to give this board jurisdiction.
Yes, uh, Mr. Pape, I've had an opportunity to review the, uh, affidavit of publication and proof of service, and the board does have jurisdiction for the, uh, application this evening.
Thank you very much. The applicant here is a building contractor who purchased this property a couple of years ago. Uh, he's looking to do a home addition on this, uh, uh, on the existing home. The existing home is an older, smaller house, and his plan is to upgrade the house to match the character of the other homes in the neighborhood. And in the design, uh, phase of the project, it became apparent that some bulk variances would be required for this project. The positioning of the house is unusual in that the house is not parallel to the street. So this made it difficult to comply with some of the setbacks, particularly the side yard setback. The front yard setback, um, is non-conforming, and it would only be expanded by, by a couple of feet. Um, but that's, that's this project. It's a home addition. Um, and with, with that as a, with that as an overview, uh, we have a couple of witnesses available this evening. We have John Hanson, who, uh, is prepared to testify as both a professional engineer and professional planner. We also have the applicant and owner of the property, Mr. Trytgo, uh, who I don't intend to call, but he is available. Um, so if, uh, if it is, uh, if the board accepts, we are ready to proceed with Mr. Hanson as our first witness.
Okay, Miss, Mr. Hanson, please raise your right hand. I'll swear you in.
Thanks.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
All right, please state your name, spell your last name, and professional affiliation for the record.
Sure, it's John, J-O-H-N, Hanson, H-A-N-S-E-N. I'm with the firm of Engineering and Land Planning Associates, Vice President, with our offices in Highbridge, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Just for the benefit of those watching at home, Mr. Hanson, would you, uh, just, uh, tell us a little bit about your background? Obviously, you hold a professional engineer's license, I just think.
Yeah, sure. Um, I have a bachelor's of science degree, uh, from Virginia Tech in 1992. Since that time, I've been, uh, doing civil engineering, uh, specifically land use, uh, here in New Jersey. Um, residential projects, commercial, industrial. I've also, um, served as the engineer for about a dozen boards.
And you've testified before boards before, correct, sir?
I've testified about 120 different towns, yeah, in my career. Yeah.
Thanks, and I think that gives people at home kind of a little bit overview of what, what we're gonna hear or what you, what your particular play in this is. So uh, we accept your credentials and your expertise, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Hanson, if you could just, uh, walk the board through the, the existing conditions of what exists on the property now, as well as the, the overall proposal?
Sure. So, as you can see with the exhibit that's up, uh, in the screen now, uh, the property is long and narrow. Uh, the property has some constraints to it. Uh, in the, um, southern end of the property, property is wooded, there's a, a creek that goes through there, and there's also some freshwater wetlands. So they're state-regulated areas. Uh, so those, those areas are not developed. The front of the property is where the development is, right along South Street. Um, the house is, was constructed back in about 1964 per the tax records. It's a simple structure. Um, very basic, what I would call a raised ranch-type structure. And, um, close to the road, served by public utilities. And if you've been by the property or if you've, you've seen it, you, you'll notice that it's not in great condition. It's somewhat dilapidated, somewhat in poor condition. I would call it a little tired, in need of an upgrade. Um, a couple of specific things that you'll notice, the, uh, property, the topo, uh, is such that the land drains away from the home in all directions. And they'll also notice, as counsel said, as he started off the, uh, introduction, the, the house is skewed with respect to South Street. It's about 10 degrees uh, off parallel from South Street, and that's important when we talk about the variances. Um, another thing to bring to your attention is that the property right, or the home right now is 25.8 feet plus or minus from the right of way of South Street. And the existing setback in the R80 zone, which the property is located, is 50 feet. So there's some uniqueness to this property, and there's also some existing nonconformities. Existing nonconformity is, is due to the location and the angle of the, of the how, home there. So why don't I take a break and see if anybody has any questions on existing conditions? Okay, if no questions, then.
Our protocol normally is we'll wait to, the board will ask questions after your testimony, sir, if they have any.
Okay, all right. Uh, could you put up the exit, or the propose, uh, proposed site plan? I do have it available. If you'd like me to do it.
Looking for the variance plan, correct?
Correct.
I had mailed that, emailed that to Vina.
Kim, do we have these plans? Cause I, the only thing I have is just a survey.
Um, uh, when we, when they came in originally, I had, um, just a survey.
Have this survey too. Please bear with me for two minutes.
Yeah, no problem. We may have to mark, uh, the other exhibits, only because I, I, I don't have them.
I know they were uploaded to the, um, online portal, and they were delivered as well. Um, and, and we, I believe either Mr. Hanson or, or I could share our screen if, if necessary.
All right. Worst comes when we, we'll, we'll just mark them anyway. So, you know, let's do this. Let's mark that first exhibit, uh, that Mr. Hanson just testified as A1, Kim, all right?
Okay.
All right, that's fine.
What is it called?
Survey.
Uh, existing conditions.
Sorry.
Thank you. Actually, I have, uh, two PDFs, but both are existing conditions. But if you give me two minutes, I can pull it up from the, uh, portal.
Might be easier if you allow me to share the screen.
You want to do that, Mr. Hanson? That might be quicker.
Yeah, I just need to have the host allow me to, to do that. Okay, looks like I can share.
All right. Good, okay.
Everybody see that, the, the plan?
Yep.
Okay, so.
Let's mark this A2. This is, uh, this is the proposed condition. This is the proposal, right, Mr. Hanson?
Correct. This variance plan, it's sheet one of two, and it's last revised August 6th, 2020. So what you'll, you'll see here in the middle of the screen is the footprint of the home and the additions and the proposed improvements that the applicant is, uh, proposing with the project. So, again, you see how the, the home is skewed to South Street is at the top of the page. Um, and what you see in the, the middle here, the lightly colored box that says original footprint, that's the existing home. And the lightly colored dashed lines that extend to the street is the existing walkway, and then you have the existing, uh, driveway to the, to the left or the west of the existing home. So it's, it's a fairly straightforward application. It exists, what they're, what they're proposing to do is essentially renovate the home, use the existing footprint to, uh, the, the best that they can, add an additional floor on it, and make the structure a modern structure. So the, the proposed footprint is going from approximately 1,000 square feet to approximately 1,400 square feet. Uh, there'll be some architectural, um, enhancements, of course, to the home to, to make it look much nicer. The driveway will be an 18-foot-wide driveway paved with asphalt that would support two cars side by side. And then obviously on the first floor, there's a new garage where currently the home has no garage. So this will be an added benefit to, um, you keep cars in from inclement weather and allow people to get into the home, um, after they park in the garage and take their groceries out and so forth. So, uh, also included is, uh, an outdoor patio of approximately, uh, 250 square feet, 16 by 16, uh, just to give it some outdoor living area, which really doesn't exist for the home now. Uh, other than that, there's really gonna be very little change. There's not a lot of land disturbance, there's not a lot of grading. Um, the natural flow of water will remain as it does now and continue in the same direction. So, uh, that's the particulars of what we're proposing. To talk a little bit about the variances, as I mentioned in the introduction, uh, the property is unique in that the home is located closer to the road than the ordinance requires it to be. And it's skewed. It's skewed 10 to 10 degrees, uh, from South Street. So what I call this is a classic C1 hardship case, and it's due, a, a, as you probably have heard many times, the positive criteria and the negative criteria need to be met in order for the board to find that the C1 is granted in this case. And the positive criteria is met by, um, demonstration that there's an undue hardship due to the narrowness, topographic conditions, or the existing location and configuration of lawfully existing structures on the lot. And that's exactly the case here. So you have a lawfully existing structure in a particular location. It creates a practical difficulty to improve that structure and make it a more modern structure with re, in reasonable terms without the variance. So that positive criteria to me is clearly met. The negative criteria to be met. Negative criteria, of course, as you've talked, as you've heard many times, is it needs to, is a three-pronged approach. It needs to be shown that there is no substantial detriment to the zone plan, the zoning ordinance, or the public good. Uh, obviously with any variance, there are minor detriments, but the test is whether it's a substantial detriment or not. And I would argue here that it's very clear and convincing that, uh, there is no substantial detriment, that the home is gonna be enhanced. There'll be no detriment to the public good. Um, there's no change in use or anything like that. So, uh, there's no, uh, substantial detriment, no, no real detriment at all to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. So, um, that is really the case in a nutshell. Again, I, I think this is a standard, straightforward case. I think it's very clear and convincing, and I think it's worthy of your approval. Yeah, can you answer any questions?
Thank you, sir. Uh, I went by the house today and looked at it, and I think the brief description of the application, uh, I don't know that, uh, hopefully the board has already read it, but it says applicants seeking to construct in addition to an existing single-family residence. New garage will be added at basement level. New addition will be constructed above the garage, adding 414 square foot, the first four, and, uh, 1,425 square foot, the second one. Now, I, I'm holding a picture in front of me, it was a Google, which is Google image that I can see. So we're talking, as we look at this house from the street, you're gonna undermine that ground there and put a garage in there?
Let me, um, let me put up the architecture.
Yeah.
We can, we can share that. Give me one second. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay, so that's, see on the, uh, on the upper right-hand corner is the front elevation, and essentially the door and the first floor is just with the existing home. And the addition is to the left where you see the garage on, on the, uh, ground, ground floor there. And then, yeah, the, the rest of the construction is pretty self-explanatory. It's bringing the second floor into it and, and enhancing the home.
Right, I just wanted everybody to understand that, that you're actually undermining the house in order to put in a garage, right?
No, they, 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 it's really, uh, it's like a raised ranch now.
Actually, I, let's mark this A3, Kim. And actually, I guess for lack of a better term, Mr. Hanson, I guess it's a subterranean garage?
Yeah.
Uh, well, I guess you could say that, yeah.
All right. All right, that's fine.
Yeah, it'd be below the, it's below the.
Below ground.
Right.
It'd be partial. It'd be partially below ground, right?
It's going to be partially below ground, the grade, if you can follow.
Yep.
Pointer, that's the grade there.
Yeah.
The, the left of the garage will be out of the ground.
Okay, gotcha.
That's all I had. I'm going to go to Mr. Gil.
Thank you, Chairman. As the applicant's attorney and, and his professionals have been testifying, we're here for two variances, a front yard variance and a side yard variance. As the applicant's engineer and planner stipulated, there are, there are a couple of existing conditions that preclude the structure from coming up with an addition that would be conforming. Mr. Hanson, is it fair to, to say, I'll ask this, I guess I'll posit this in the form of a question. Is it fair to say that you could not construct an addition that would conform to the front or side yard vari, side yard setback, such that you wouldn't be creating these variances?
You certainly couldn't construct an addition to the front because it's already located in the setback. You could do a very small addition to the side and not violate the side yard, but the addition wouldn't be very usable.
And if you were, if you were to reconstruct the home and abandon the existing footprint, could you build this home or similar home without damaging or affecting and getting implicated with the, either riparian buffers that exist to the rear of the home or the wetlands that exist on the property?
No, it would be, it would be problematic to do that because the you have the riparian buffer and you have wetland transitionaries in the back. The wetland transitionary is actually lapped at the back of the house now, so we're going to need a, I think it's a general permit eight to, to building. But if you pushed it back any further, you'd be outside of the threshold limits of what could be approved by the EPA, and it just, it wouldn't be practical, and you'd you'd create land disturbance in a regulated area.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, as we've done in the past and as the ordinance permits, when someone is doing an addition on the existing nonconforming structure, generally speaking, you can continue that nonconformity if that nonconformity doesn't create a deficiency or the existing nonconformity is in a deficiency of greater than seven and a half feet. A very basic example, if you have a 30-foot setback and your existing deficiency is more than 23-foot, we let you, as a matter of right, continue that addition there, that new space, because you're not creating any new variances. There wouldn't be an opportunity for him to do that here, for the applicant to do that here, because the existing deficiency is in excess of 22, 23 feet. The home is sitting too close to the house. And then, as is normal, we, we often design additions to complement the existing contours of the house, so they follow an elevation or they expand on an existing elevation because of the catty quarter nature and the offset, I think the applicant said 10 degrees. We're, we're exacerbating or creating a larger addition, which, if the offset wasn't there, we'd still be in variance territory, but we wouldn't be exacerbating a condition. We'd just be maintaining it and by virtue of the ordinance it'd be before you here today. And I think as Mr. Hanson said, it would be impractical for them to design a new dwelling that wouldn't have impact on the, at least, at the very least, the riparian buffer that's in the back, which isn't presently being encroached on or lapped on. And those are the variances here today. So the technical numbers are the, the front yard is proposed at 23.62, where 50 feet is required. And the side yard is proposed at 16.33, where 20 feet is required.
It's, it's not a rear yard setback, correct?
No, there's no rear yard setback. As Mr. Side yard and front yard. And as Mr. Hanson stipulate, stipulated in his testimony, there is a small increase in the front yard variance, or the existing condition by virtue of the fact that the building skews and the side of the addition gets closer to the street. And there is an increase in the variance because, the side yard, because that was the most usable area for them to expand to.
Yeah, I would agree that they're doing the, the best that they possibly can with what, what they've been presented with in, in the pre-existing conditions, so. It certainly, the plan looks very good to me. I'm going to go to, anything else, Mr. Gil?
I, I just wanted to clarify. I think the plans, I haven't had the benefit of seeing these plans either. I believe the plan called for an abandonment of the existing driveway and a reseeding of the area. Is that correct, Mr. Hanson?
That is correct, yes.
So is there, is there a decrease in the impervious coverage? Because it's a pretty substantial driveway, it looks like.
Yeah, the, you know, it's hard to really define what's existing there. You know, it's broken concrete and there's been gravel that's been spread out, looks like, over a number of years. So I'd say, you know, a one-to-one swap.
In a, in a worse case, it's, you think it's a wash?
I think it's about a wash, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gil. Board members, I'm going to go to each one of you. Mr. Scott, no?
Yes, I do have a question, sir. Presently, is the home hooked up to sewer and water and natural gas?
Oh, well, I don't know about natural gas, but it definitely is hooked up to public water and sewer.
And how is the house heated now?
Counselor, do you know?
I believe.
I thought I saw a tank on the back on the existing conditions map.
I believe there is a tank, above-ground tank on the property. Give me a moment, I can confirm.
Actually, yeah, I'm looking through my notes now. It looks like an above-ground oil tank. So that would be heat.
So that's gas?
Oil.
Oh, oil.
Actually, the client, no, client confirmed it. It is gas. Hooked up to gas.
And you said it has sewer and water hooked up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gil, Beth?
No, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Connor? No questions? Mr. Duhers?
Uh, no questions.
Nice job, Walker.
No questions.
Uh, Mr. Stoudt?
Um, no questions.
Yeah, Mr. Psychowski?
No questions.
Uh, Mr. Sacks, you got anything right now?
No, I'm good. I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, Mr. Pape, is there going to be other witnesses?
No, that's all.
Okay. Anything else you would like to tell us first, before I go to the public portion?
Uh, just that, the, you know, here we have an applicant who's ready and prepared to come in to make some upgrades to this house and hopefully create a home that is in line with the other homes in the neighborhood, which we think will be a, a benefit to the community.
I would agree with you. The plan looks very good, and it's, it's a shame that, that a lot of, is kind of, it's a strange kind of angle when you, when you do, when you drive down the street. But nonetheless, I think it's going to make difference of what you have. So having said that, I'm going to open the public portion, right, sir?
Yes.
This is matter 68-2020Z. The location of this property is 25 South Street in Old Bridge. If anybody at home has been listening and you're interested in making comments or asking questions on this particular application, you'll see on the screen, wherever you're watching us, there's phone numbers. You can call any one of them, and you'll be answered, and you could be put through to the board to ask your question. It'll take about 60 seconds. Mrs. Swan, is presently anyone on the line?
No.
Okay. We'll take about 60 seconds to see if anyone wants to call in. Now would be the time to call in, because I'm, after about a minute or a minute and a half, I'm going to close the public portion. So please call now if you have an interest in this application.
No callers yet.
Okay, Mr. Sacks, we're good on the time?
Yeah, we're good. We can close, we can entertain closing the public portion.
Okay, I'm going to close the public portion at this time. Final comments, Mr. Pape? I assume you're going to ask me for a vote, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we would, we would ask the board to vote favorably on this application.
All right, thank you. Board members, before we take a vote, does any, everyone understand that there's a, there's two variances here, a front yard variance, a, a front yard setback, and the side yard. And it's kind of hurt by the fact that it's canted, the house, and not parallel with the street. So it doesn't make it any easier, and the front yard is already pre-existing nonconforming. Absent any questions from the boards, or I, I don't see anybody's hand going up, I'm going to ask someone to move the two C variances, if you'd be inclined to favor this application. I'm moving. Ms. Ms. Gil, you're going to move the Cs, you're in favor?
Yes.
A second, a second.
Is there a second?
A second.
Who was it, Mr. Stoner?
Yes, yes, a second.
Mr. Stoner has seconded. Ms. Gil was the maker of motion.
Um, he's the, Mr. Stoner's the second alternate.
Okay, so, okay, we'd have to have someone else, then.
I'll second it, Scott, no?
It's a God no. Roll call, please, Mr. Silverman.
Mr. Duhers?
Uh, I've had an opportunity also to go by this house yesterday, seeing what the plans are. This is a market improvement, as Trump was there before, so my vote is yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Gil?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Psychowski?
Yes.
Chairman Solvin?
Yes. Mr. Sacks, do we have a resolution?
No, we don't, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll have to prepare one for the next meeting.
All right, then it'll be for the next meeting, correct, sir?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Pape, thank you and your professionals and the applicant for being here this evening, wishing the best of luck on moving forward on, on improving the situation there. I'm sure, I'm sure it'll come out good.
Thank you very much. Good night, all.
Okay, good night. I'm not going to confuse you with your father, right? I'm, I'm sure, I see his name still on here, so I hope he gave you satisfactory performance this evening.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go get the report.
We're giving you good grades, Jared.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Sacks, you have any business to tell the board, any update on the litigation?
No, no updates. I haven't filed my answer yet because the town has not been technically served yet. So I expect that should happen shortly.
And anything else on the horizon you want us to know about?
No, everything else, no, nothing else. I mean, obviously, you know, I think we discussed at the last meeting, the, the new DCA requirements, which I think we're in compliance with, you know, for, for having these meetings, and, you know, we'll, we'll see what the future holds.
Okay, sir. Ms. Silverman, you have anything you want to tell the board?
Uh, our next meeting is November 5. It's the only meeting in November. We have a pretty big night that night, and I'll be sending you all a bunch of stuff, and I'll be releasing the surfaces next week.
Okay, and that also is going to be a Zoom meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else, board members? Want to, anything to say? Well, that means, then it's time for someone to entertain, someone to raise a motion to adjourn.
Oh, come on, you guys, motion.
Okay.
You have a job to do. You have to do it.
The only board who adjusts and stands, stands adjourned for this evening.
Good night, everybody.
Good evening, everyone.